And we're live.
Welcome, everybody, to the Planning Board meeting of September 16th. Before I read through the agenda, let me call the roll and we'll begin there. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Delio.
Here.
Anne Gardner will be absent. Tanya Hartford will be absent. Liam McGovern.
Yeah.
Rick Tainter.
Here.
MJ Verde.
Here.
Don Walters will be absent. Bonnie Sontag here. Okay, the agenda for tonight is public hearings listed for the Institution for Savings, Site Plan Review and two special permits, a request to continue. A minor site plan review for Zero Parker Street, also a request to continue. Approval not required for 17A Harrison Street and 198 Water Street. And a request for minor modification at 190 High Street. We'll then have approval of the minutes. And under potential zoning amendments, we will continue our discussion about the short-term rental amendment before the City Council and the Planning Board in a joint public hearing at our next meeting. And then there'll be any updates from the Chair or the Planning Director. Before we begin, just a reminder for anybody joining us from the public that all documents are available on the city website under Planning Board. But Director Port will be pulling up and displaying documents as relevant to each application. And also, well, we won't have any public comment tonight, so I don't need to comment about that. Minor application, minor reviews are not open for public comments. Let's begin with the first item on the agenda, Institution for Savings, 93 State Street, Site Plan Review, ITIF Special Permit and DoD Special Permit. Have a request to continue to October 21st. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to continue to October 21st.
And a second? That's Rick. A second?
A second. Leah.
Thank you. And we'll take roll call for all those in favor. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. That's continued. Minor Site Plan Review for Zero Parker Street, a request to continue to November 4th. I'd like to have a motion for that.
Alden, so moved.
Thank you, Alden. And a second?
I'll second it.
I'm sorry.
I will second it, Beth.
Oh, thanks, Beth.
Yep.
And I'll take roll call for all in favor. Alden Clark?
Yes.
Beth Delio?
Yes.
Liam McGovern?
Yes.
Rick Tinter?
Yes.
MJ Verde?
Yes.
And Bonnie Sontag, yes. So we're down to the first application for the evening, approval not required for 17A Harrison Street and 198 Water Street. Do we have someone here to go through that plan with us?
So Bonnie, this is Andy Port. I can speak to that if you'd like.
Can you pull it up, please? Oh, good. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, so this plan, the last meeting, Rick Tinter had noted that there was a discrepancy in the line types shown for the lots. And more particularly, the note, number one, that it was confusing because it made, suggested that it was being conveyed only to a condominium unit. And it had to make reference to the entire parcel, so we spoke with the surveyor who prepared the plan and the notation was revised accordingly. If anybody wants to take a look at it, I'll just blow that up. I hope that this revision, I believe, addresses the concern that was previously raised. And Rick could probably speak to that, but in our opinion, this is ready for endorsement with the revision to the notation.
Yes, I agree. This is exactly what I was looking for.
Anyone else want to comment on it? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the ANR.
I'll make that motion, Rick.
Thank you. And a second?
Second, Alden.
Okay.
Bonnie, is that a motion to approve or a motion?
No, to endorse. I'm sorry, I just saw the wording on that. I meant to say endorse. Linda, please note that. Okay, we have the two the motion and the, and the second, so I'll take a roll call on endorsement. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. That is so endorsed. Request for minor modification on a 6C Special Permit at 190 High Street. And do we have anyone representing the applicant or themselves?
Bonnie, we have Mark Donovan in the audience who has raised his hand and Sarah Wolf, a real estate attorney. I don't know who you'd like to.
Well, I don't know who. Can you check with them to see who's, wants to speak about this? I mean, I don't want a public comment. I want.
Yeah, this Ted Nelson is the applicant. I'm happy to speak to this and summarize essentially what's going on here because frankly, I think I could keep it relatively simple for everybody. If you'd like.
That's fine with me, Andy.
Okay, I also don't want to cut off anybody else, so if it's all right with you, I'll just give a quick synopsis using the, the plan to show what's happening.
Sure.
So this image right here is, is the best way to look at it, I think. This is an aerial photograph of the property. And you'll see here, this is the Nelson property right here. And years back, there was a special permit that was approved and a variance, I think, as well. And at any rate, the Planning Board and Zoning Board Appeals approved this project to have us, another dwelling unit added to the property in the Carriage House, and there was an expectation at the time that two parking spaces would go. If you look at my cursor right now, here and here. And there was an assumption that a curb cut, another additional curb cut would be added to the, the High Street frontage here. A concern was raised about that by an abutter recently, and Mr. Nelson and the abutter, Eric Goodness, had spoken about this. There was an agreement in principle to, to resolve this issue, and then I should clarify, Eric's concern was that he did not think that it was appropriate to have that curb cut there. He wanted to have that removed. So there was an agreement in principle between the parties to request a modification to the special permit, and what this, that's what this modification is here. You know, and per that agreement that they established, the submission has been given both to this board and to the Zoning Board of Appeals to prove the exact same change, which is that there will be no curb cut and the cars would not be parked here, but rather four spaces here and two in the Carriage House here. Therefore, providing the 5.5 or rounded up six spaces that are required for the permit. The, Caitlin checked with the Fire Department and there's no issues with access from their perspective. The office essentially recommends approval of this as a minor modification to the original permit. That would resolve the issue that the abutter had raised and clarify for the record how the parking is being dealt with, with the existing area as opposed to a new curb cut across the sidewalk here. And the same thing would happen next week with the Zoning Board of Appeals, so I'm happy to answer any questions or let anyone else speak that, here for that matter.
Board members, have any questions?
Yes. So, so Andy, I looked at the 2016 decision, and I couldn't find reference to that second curb cut. Did I miss it or was that only in the zoning board decision?
Is Andy muted?
Yeah, he is.
Sorry, my apologies. Yeah, I was muted.
And you were talking, weren't you?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I was halfway through my explanation, sorry. Yeah, so there was a expectation that time the parking spaces would go here for the purposes of permitting, but they had, they had not yet gotten the approval from Public Services to put that curb cut in here across the sidewalk, and so it's, you're right that it's not written in the decision as an explicit condition. But that is, the proposal here is to resolve that by removing the spaces that were expected to be here and place them over here.
Well, I guess my question is, what are, what are, what is our modification? Because I don't see us modifying anything in the decision.
Yeah, so what you would be doing is actually modifying, and essentially, I would also argue, clarifying for the record through this modification that all six, or all 5.5 or six spaces have to be placed in the existing parking area as shown essentially on this. They, they did not provide a, a single site plan, if you will. They used existing records that were available, so the, the survey of the property plus this markup of the aerial photo. So in essence, these exhibits would be referenced in a typical certificate of vote. If the board approves a minor modification, it would reference this, these two things to show where the parking spaces are going in the text and then reference to this. Therefore, making it clear for the record that these spaces cannot go here and there would not be a curb cut across High Street. That's basically what you'd be doing here is, is approving that modification for the record, making it clear.
Okay, just two other questions. One, I guess, is just a clarification. One of the neighbors' letters referred to the park, to the two parking spaces on Washington Street, but those appear to be on a separate lot, so I assume that's not, we're not approving those two parking spaces of Washington Street. We're just approving what's, what you just mentioned, which is six spaces basically within this red outline area here.
That is correct. It has nothing to do with Washington Street.
And then the last question is, I noted that the decision said that the approval would last for two years, which would take it to 2018. Was there a subsequent extension of that that is not, that we haven't been presented with, or is, and is this still alive, this, this approval?
Yeah, so, no, we, we had a conversation with the Copeland and Page actually about that because of the timeframe. And it was the opinion of our legal counsel that, and the zoning administrator as well, Jennifer Blanchet, that because the applicant had engaged in the work with the Massachusetts Historic Commission, MHC, on the preservation restriction that was required as part of the project. However, that PR hasn't been finalized yet, but because they had engaged in that process and have been communicating back and forth with MHC, they had essentially engaged the, the special permit within the timeframe. The only issue that was, was left here is that the, the closure of that preservation restriction that hasn't been recorded yet. So they have right now a letter from MHC that it itemizes some changes to the PR. The PR, I believe, has been sent back and the PR now needs to have a final approval from MHC. It should have all the changes that they have wanted in it because they did explicitly itemize what the changes were in language that they wanted in a several-page letter. And so that preservation restriction would be recorded, and, and so in essence, yes, legal counsel believe that the permit was engaged despite the fact that there may not be, you know, construction that we're pointing to here.
Thank you.
So that raises an issue for me. What was the preservation restriction predicated on in terms of any movement going forward? Was it a building permit or an occupancy permit? Were we doing that at that time, or did we just leave it open-ended? I haven't looked at the application, the decision, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I don't have the little language of from it at the moment. I can pull it up, but essentially it was prior to billing permits being pulled.
Oh, so they haven't done anything on the main building to convert it?
No, there, there has been, I'll defer to Jennifer Blanchet, who, actually, yeah, she's here tonight. They, there was some construction that had happened on the property. However, the, again, the permit was engaged and it was not disputed about the work that was involved to put basically accesses, I believe it, to, to the rear of the, the structure. So there, there, there had been some construction work that was taking place, but the PR hadn't yet, had not yet been finalized from MHC. They had basically gone to draft approval.
Okay, that's just to confirm that they are within their, they're within the requirements of the, there are no other outstanding issues with this permit.
That's correct. The recording of the PR is the last outstanding condition, and right now it's out of the applicant's hands because they're waiting for Mass Historical to circle back and give final approval on the the final version that they submitted.
Any other board members with comments on this? Okay, then we can go forward and take a motion to deem the request minor and improve, and approve the minor modification. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Bonnie, it's Leah.
I'll second Rick.
Thank you, Rick. And I'll do a roll call for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes.
Now, Bonnie, if I could just, I realize this is not a public hearing, but we do have a raised hand in the audience, Mark Donovan. I don't know if that's related in any way, or if you want to take the question or concern.
Well, it's done. Not, I mean, this is a minor modification. We don't usually take any comments from the public. If he's not related to the application and didn't speak on the application, I don't think we need to.
Isn't he involved in 17A Harrison Street?
Yeah.
That's, that's correct.
Right.
Well, that's already done. That's long gone.
Yeah, I, I guess all I'm saying is, is raise his hand is raised, because I guess the question is, do you want to find out what he's concerned about?
Yeah, check in with what he wants to say about.
Mark, are you able to unmute yourself and speak to the board?
Yep, can you hear me? Hello? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I did have my hand raised when I was on the agenda, just to be clear. So I have a question concerning the, I, I guess you endorsed versus approved. I'm just not clear what that means, so I'm hoping someone may clarify that for me.
Yeah, this is Andy. It's very, it's actually, for your purposes, the exact same thing. The subdivision control refers to it as an endorsement for approval-not-required plans, these ANRs. It's the same thing effectively for your purposes as an approval, but the state statute refers to it as an endorsement, so you've got what you wanted.
Wonderful. I appreciate that explanation.
Sure.
All right, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. We'll talk about any edits people have after we get the motions on the table. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve for the purposes of discussion.
Thank you. A second? That was Rick. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Alden. Any comments on the minutes?
Well, it seems like they're not complete, are they? Were they, do we get a version?
Yeah, we need Linda to speak to that. Linda, can you come on, please?
Hold on just a minute. Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are.
All right, I haven't looked at them. All right, I haven't, I'll have to call them up.
Did you see my note to you that they weren't finished at the end?
Oh, dear. Let me.
I think you may have been so relieved to get through the short-term rental discussion that you left the rest of it undone.
All right, let me just track it down. I have everything on a hard drive.
This is Andy. Well, regardless of Linda pulling it up right now, given that the board wouldn't have had time to review whatever version, whatever language might be missing from the draft minutes, I would just suggest that this could be carried to the next agenda. That way the board can receive and review the correct version from Linda.
Okay.
All right, that sounds great.
All right.
I think I sent out the wrong version. I'm looking. I think I sent out the wrong, the wrong state. I sent it out the wrong stage.
All right, let's just withdraw that motion.
Withdraw.
Thank you, guys. And I need a motion to continue approval of the minutes to the October 7th meeting.
So moved. Rick?
Rick, thank you.
A second, Alden.
Okay, Alden, thank you. And I'll take a roll call for all in favor. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Leah?
I think I need to abstain because I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay. Rick?
Yes.
MJ? MJ? Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes.
Um, I need to abstain as well because I left the meeting early.
Okay.
This is Andy. I, just for clarification, this isn't approval of the minutes. This is just to carry it over to the next agenda, so there's really not a, that's a procedural administrative action.
Oh, yes, then. Okay.
Then I'll change mine to a yes as well.
Okay, good. And Bonnie, yes. So we'll just, we'll, we'll review those at the next meeting. Here's a procedural question. I, in the past, we've always opened the minutes and then talked about them and then made any changes, whether to change the motion to amend the minutes, or in this case, withdraw it and put in one to continue it. It sounds messy, but I'm not sure we're with Robert's rules. We're not allowed to discuss them until it's actually been opened. Andy, could you clarify a clean way to handle minutes going forward, so I'm not tripping over myself every time?
Yeah, sure enough. Forgive me if you wanted to, perhaps, you might want me to rephrase the question. I guess in general, I would say, I would wait till the final, the, the version that is complete is before you.
No, 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 that's not the question.
Okay.
What the question is, in general, when we get to approval of the minutes, as in this case, I asked for a motion and a second, and then we started discussing it. And it turned out we had to change the motion. In the past, usually we have found that we needed to say amended minutes because some edits had been made beforehand and we just announced it. So anything that comes up in the discussion could change the motion. Should we still go ahead and make the motion before we have the discussion?
Yes, the, if I'm understanding the question correctly, the proper procedure is to first have a motion to approve, then to go into deliberations, and of course, if there's any amendments or modifications to that, then it would be essentially, you know, for instance, a motion to approve as amended.
And can we change that motion before we take the vote? Or do we have to withdraw the first one and, you know, bring in a new one just because they're amended?
Well, it depends a little bit on the context. So I mean, for instance, the, if someone's making a proposing amendment or a change to the, you know, the, just the version that's been a motion to approve, then if it was a friendly amendment, so to speak, and this, this happens a lot with the City Council, if there's a friendly amendment, meaning, you know, perhaps Rick, you know, suggested some language changes be added to the approval of the minutes. If there was a friendly amendment, you know, to a motion made by Leah, then, you know, that could be incorporated in the record as part of the motion to approve, so approve as amended. You could certainly have someone just withdraw the motion to approve. I think, you know, I, I have typically almost always seen either the board approve the minutes as drafted or approve them as amended through whatever discussion and market you've agreed to at the meeting.
Okay, and so what we did tonight actually was appropriate because we had to change the motion altogether. So we had it withdrawn and then a new motion was put in.
Right, right.
But usually, it's been just, you know, minor things, so we could change the motion sort of right before we take the vote to amended.
Correct, and, you know, most often, I assume, board members will work together to either withdraw or proceed by modifying the motions on the floor.
Okay, I think that's a little cleaner then. I feel better. I just felt like several times now, I've kind of tripped over and interrupted people to change the wording of the motion, and this makes it cleaner. So from now on, I'll just open it. We'll have the discussion and decide it before we take the vote if we can do, carry on, or if we have to change the motion. All right, procedural issue put to bed. Thank you very much. Now we're going to go to a continuation of our discussion from the last meeting on short-term rentals. Everybody has gotten a copy of the outline, and my proposal is that we just go through it, see where everybody comes out on these topics. As I think Anne astutely noted the previous meeting, it didn't sound like we were going to get consensus on everything, so that's not what I'm driving for. As as this is an outline of issues that were discussed last time and incorporates everybody's views, but tonight we will try to record ideas that we want to take forward to the joint public hearing at the next meeting where we're going to be meeting with the City Council. And we can figure out how to document that and, and how to get that to the City Council when we finish our discussion tonight. So does anyone have any other ideas about moving forward on this, rather than just going through the outline as, as written?
By the, and do you mean the issues that were sent out?
Yeah, the issues from 9 to 20 Planning Board Meeting.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
So Bonnie, I don't have any issues, any, anything to add about that, but I just want to let you know that I have the document open and I can be making notes on it as we go along.
That's great. Yeah. Okay, so I'm glad Andy brought this up because this is Rick's draft suggestions for a rewrite of the amendment that we have with the City Council right now. And specifically, it has definitions in it, so when we get to that point, we can refer to them. But there's no, there's no plan at this point anyway to submit any kind of other amendment or, or other worded amendment. We don't want to complicate the councilors' lives with that, so this is just for discussion purposes. Okay, the first topic was, do we want to keep the purpose statements as stated or make any changes to ensure we're on the same page as we discuss the issues below? Does anybody have anything that they want to add, subtract, or change under those? We've got here on the outline, the potential for competing goals, one and two in the originally proposed amendment from City Council. Do, is that where that comes from? Yeah, Rick, help me out here.
Yeah, so that was just meant to kind of summarize some of the discussion that we had in our meeting, where, you know, there was several members would like to not have regulatory hurdles to short-term rental units, while others were talking about some of the adverse impacts that we would want to protect the neighborhoods from. So that was, that was really my attempt to say here, here are some goals that we have as Planning Board members that may reflect goals in the community as well. And I know that, I know that unfortunately, neither of them are here, but Anne and Dawn were both talking about, or especially Anne, I think, talking about how there seem to be a lot of people supporting short-term rental units and, and not that much opposition to them, so she wasn't, she was concerned about how we were throwing up roadblocks in the, in the way of special permits. And yet other members were talking about issues about traffic and noise and congestion and so forth. So that was just meant to encapsulate one of the dynamics that we, we had in our meeting. And then the other, the other one, which is the competing goals too, has to do with kind of cost and income, and an argument in favor of short-term rental units is giving homeowners the opportunity at income. But other people were talking about how the fact that when you have short-term rental units, it takes housing, rental housing off the market, and so that you, that's against the goal of, of supporting housing.
So it sounds like those goals are underlying our entire discussion. They're not meant to be part of the actual amendment purpose statements. Is that correct?
Correct.
Oh, good. Okay, so that's just backdrop encapsulating our concerns in general, which we may be able to use for our, our statements to the City Council before. our statements to the city council before next meeting. What I was looking at was the actual purpose statements. Did somebody want to add something? Sorry. And I was comparing them with what Rick had proposed in his draft on that other, which document was it? Yes, and that other document that Andy had up.
Bonnie, you'd like me to bring up the other document, is that correct?
Yeah, because the first purpose statement he has simplified, and I'm wondering if everybody's comfortable with that versus the one that is in the proposed amendment from the councilors. So this one says, "To provide clear and consistent procedures and standards for permitting short-term rental units as accessory units to principal residential uses." And the councilors have in here, "To provide a clear and consistent process through which certain dwelling units may be registered with the City of Newbury Port for accessory use to a residential use as short-term rental units." And I think I just heard the difference. I'm going to just check this with everybody. The one that's written here sounds more like a licensing one, registered.
Yes.
Yeah. And the one that Rick has proposed is more clearly related to zoning and permitting.
That was the intent.
I got it. Other people, are you with us on this? Go with this statement?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And the other two are basically the same, right, Rick?
I believe so.
Okay. Good. And nothing else that anyone else wants to add to that that's important to stay upfront?
Bonnie, this is Jennifer. I did have one question for you on the special permit versus by right table that was put up.
We haven't gotten there yet.
I'm sorry. Andy had it up originally, and I, okay.
Yeah.
I will wait.
We're going to go by this, by this outline. So when we get there, actually, we're getting to it next.
Just FYI, that falls first in the document. So it's actually before this section you were looking at right now.
Right, but we were going through from the issues page.
Yeah, we're going through the issues page. I thought the purpose statement was always first, but anyway, not in, oh, and not in this draft document. Right. Okay. All right. So the next issue was, should the different types of short-term rentals be defined and distinguished in the zoning ordinance? So let's dive into that and look at that chart and see what people think about definitions. And Jennifer, you started, so carry on.
Well, I, you talked a little bit about special permits, and forgive me, I did miss a meeting. And I understand there was some conversation as to whether or not they should be special permit in all districts or some districts. And my question still is, what would be the criteria by which the board would be able to deny a special permit? If all of the conditions within the ordinance were met, it seems like an extra hurdle from an administrative standpoint. So that was, that's my two cents. And therefore, I think that if you're careful, if everyone is careful about crafting both the ordinance and the licensing, that the need for a special permit could be avoided.
Right.
Yeah, this is Andy. Just to provide some context, this is an issue that's come up quite a bit in the last several months as this has been batted around, this ordinance. I don't know that the office sees any benefit of having both a special permit and a license if the license can cover all the, you know, particular criteria that need to be met by an applicant to have a short-term rental unit. Just because it would send the applicant to two different boards for essentially the same thing.
Okay, that's good to have. And I realize we just jumped ahead because that that gets decided once we've figured out the definitions, because if we sort through the definitions differently, it may make a big difference on whether or not we want to have special permits or not. But this chart, I think, would be helpful. Rick's...
Actually, there's one other thing.
What was that?
Okay, I was going to say, there's one other thing to think about with special permit versus permitted. And that just has to do with the relationship between the short-term rental units and the lodging houses and bed and breakfasts. So I think that kind of relates to that. I was, I was concerned about jumping, changing something immediately from a prohibited use to a permitted use, which is what we would be doing if we allowed short-term rental units as of right, because right now, bed and breakfasts are prohibited in several residential districts. And and this would essentially be allowing them, allowing the small bed and breakfast by right everywhere. So I was, I was actually, it was out of caution going from a prohibited use to a, to a permitted use. But if we, so we may want to have that discussion, you know, discussion about how this relates to bed and breakfasts and lodging houses before we discuss the use table.
Right. And I had a couple of comments on that because I think if we approach the definitions of the uses, that might help us sort this out. I noticed in the lodging house definition, you know, it talks about what it includes or excludes. And my thought was, we were worried about conflicts and overlaps in the definitions. And so my thought was that we should say the lodging house, you know, excludes bed and breakfast, and it excludes short-term rental units. And similarly, on bed and breakfast, to say that that excludes short-term rental units so that we don't have any overlap. And then keep the definitions otherwise as they are in there. And then when it comes up to licensing, they would, they would be licensing it as one of those, one of those types and not have any overlap. That was my thought.
Yeah. Now, those two definitions don't come under the purview of what we're discussing. Andy, how do we handle recommendations to the use definitions in the use table?
Well, if you can be very clear about what you want, I would suggest trying to stick with something like what Rick had done, which is to basically provide a revised version of that table because the proposed amendment right now has a table in it. And I think what Rick has done is broken it down to those subcategories that were discussed at the last meeting. So I would suggest either summarizing it in some sort of paragraph or bullet form, bullet form is being, you know, simpler to follow, or preferably, if you can provide the revised table, I'm happy to pull up what Rick did, but actually put it in that format so that the councilors can see how it relates to the table that they currently have in the draft.
So specifically to Alden's point, if we wanted to just amend the lodging house and the bed and breakfast uses to say that they exclude the other one plus short-term rentals, would that be appropriate?
Yeah, I think what the suggestion is, is essentially to add to the amendment that's been proposed, a cleanup or revision to the language of other uses in the zoning ordinance that are, have essentially an overlap or a potential conflict with the new use, short-term rental units being added. So the suggestion would be not only to refine the definition of short-term rental units, but also to tweak the language of existing uses in the zoning ordinance, you know, not the ones that are new, but ones that might have a little bit of overlap to prevent that confusion. So to follow, you know, Alden's point, trying to make it very clear that each one is distinct and there's not overlap between them.
Okay, so does any, anyone else want to comment on this about the distinction between the three uses in terms of definitions? Does that seem to solve the problem for you who know more about this than some of us?
Just to be, to be very simple, I guess, the simplest way to do it would be to redefine a bed and breakfast to be only something where somebody rents four or five rooms because one to three rooms would be a limited share. That would be the simplest thing to do. Just to say, bed and breakfast, if you're renting three rooms, you're a limited share rental unit. If you're, if you're renting four bedrooms, you're a bed and breakfast.
I don't really see the need for that if they want to apply to be a bed and breakfast, no matter how many rooms they have, if they're distinct, because once they go to licensing, they're going to go for a license for a short-term rental unit or a bed and breakfast, right?
My concern, though, is the bed and breakfast is prohibited in the R1 and R2, and the short-term rental unit would be allowed. So you...
Right. So if they're in that district, then they would apply to be a short-term rental unit. When they go to licensing, and all the rules of that would apply. So that there's no overlap. They have to come in and saying, I'm a this, or I'm a bed and breakfast, or I'm a short-term rental unit.
But I don't see how they can say that. If the definition says that if you're renting rooms, you're a bed and breakfast, then this is what we talked about last time. The current, and we talked about this time, the time before also, where the, where you have two regulations that apply to something, the stricter one applies. So you'd never be able to actually do, even if you wanted to call yourself a short-term rental, you'd still be a bed and breakfast according to the zoning.
Well, not if we put that exclusion in the definition saying, you know, doesn't, it doesn't include a bread and breakfast, or the short-term rental doesn't, or a bed and breakfast doesn't include a short-term rental.
But doesn't...
That's my thought.
Right. But doesn't that mean, if you say that it doesn't include a short-term rental, that means it doesn't have three or fewer rooms for rent? So...
It means it has however many rooms it has, not more than five, which is the current definition. I, my thought was, why change that if we've got all the existing bread and breakfasts out there? And if they want to call themselves that and got a license for that, then they're covered by those regulations. Whether they have two rooms or five rooms.
Alden brings up a good point. There are bed and breakfasts out there already that may be quite small and then, or larger, you know, small, let's say small, and would then be, well, they'd be grandfathered, but you know.
Right.
I think Alden's got a point in that that we know the licensing determines a lot of things that is not appropriate for the zoning. And one of the things that wouldn't be appropriate for zoning is to say how many units are in it, right?
Well, that's what the zoning does say. The zoning, the zoning does say that. It says it for short, for bed and breakfast right now. And the proposed zoning for short-term rentals says how many units there are.
Yeah, that is critical to the definitions, I would, I would argue.
So I guess I'm really concerned about if something, even if we say, I don't know how we can, if we say, if the zoning says that anybody, anything that is, that rents up to five units, up to five rooms is a bed and breakfast, and anything that rents up to three rooms is a short-term rental unit, I just think we have an automatic conflict. And why, why not just, and if you look at the list of licensed beds and bed and breakfasts, we've got the Essex Street Inn and the Garrison Inn. So those are large. And I don't, I actually didn't look to see how many rooms were in the other ones, but...
I was curious how many rooms they had, but you notice, like, the Essex has three licenses.
Yeah.
So they must have...
They have three licenses because they have three separate buildings and...
Right, given the, given the room limits. So they maybe have chopped it up because of that.
That is how they bought them. Well, maybe, no, maybe you're right. Maybe you're right.
That has to do with fire codes, and the limit has to do with the building occupancy. So they need, they need the license for each structure. That's all that the licensing, the three units of license have, has to do with.
Yeah, this is Andy. To the point that was being discussed, you know, this focus of the discussion a second ago, I definitely think that I don't, I mean, there's different ways you can carve this out, this language and the thresholds, but wherever we end up with the definitions for short-term rental units or the subcategories and the existing uses that might have overlap or conflict, I definitely agree with the suggestion, I think, that Rick has made and Alden's made that, and I would think that Jennifer would agree as well, that we not have overlap between those uses where there might be confusion. So we could debate, you know, how to tweak those definitions, but I would definitely suggest in the end, whatever that ends up being, that there not be overlap to Rick's point about, you know, counting up to three or counting up to five.
So that means redefining bed and breakfast, even for the ones that are in existence now? So conceivably, their license could come up again if they only have three rooms, and they would be denied, or do they get some...
Presumably, presumably, it's just a matter of, you know, I don't, I don't presume that the licenses would be that different between a bed and breakfast and a, and a short-term rental unit. It's the same, the same issues.
I mean, is there a way to define the bed and breakfast in a way that is separate from the short-term rental units, but allow a bed and breakfast, even if it's smaller, to somehow proceed under some exception? Because I think we're concerned, right, about bed and breakfasts calling themselves short-term rental units and going in. Here's my, the bed and breakfast are only allowed in certain zones, right? Probably because was there some concern about an intensity of use, or is this appropriate in other areas?
Yeah, and that's why I was thinking to not change that and have them still be limited to those areas, because there are some differences, isn't? One of the things I, I thought was being implied was a bed and breakfast can have a sign out front saying bed and breakfast, whereas a short-term rental unit could not. I thought was one of the things that was proposed early on. So there are some differences in how they want to present themselves. And I was, I was thinking, if we make the exclusion that, that the bed and breakfast is not a short-term rental unit, and, but, and then not change anything, no matter what size they want. And then look further at the definition of a short-term rental unit. If we want to have a certain limit to the number of units or rooms and so forth there, I think, you know, we can zero in on that more, but to allow the bed and breakfast to go forward as they are in the existing zones where they're allowed because of the, there are some differences in how they present themselves.
Right. But I think having a cap on the number of bedrooms for a short-term rental unit to something that we feel is reasonable makes sense so that people are not opening what would be a bed and breakfast in an area where we don't, opening something larger where it may not be appropriate.
Yeah, I agree. So that's why we could look at the definition of short-term rental unit, that we, you know, zero in on that more.
Okay, so should we look at the ones that Rick has suggested? Because they do not have number of units incorporated into them. I don't remember if the original one did. They don't even have them in here. They're in the...
And it's, it's that, that third paragraph which goes on for quite length. So it's not, there's not a succinct definition in the original city council.
Well, the definitions are sitting in the in the licensing amendment, not in the zoning amendment. And this goes back to the original question that came right from public.
Yeah, I wasn't looking at that because we're looking at the zoning.
I know. Well, that's where you'll find it. So limited share says, limited to a maximum of three bedrooms.
Right.
So we're saying now that we would like to incorporate that into the definitions that we're going to have in the zoning ordinance to differentiate the use from bed and breakfast, for example.
I think, I think we need a definition there, yes.
With the number of units.
I'm okay with that. I initially thought, I liked Rick's breakdown of the different ones. But if we have the various limitations on the other aspects, so there's no, there's no overlap, I'm, I'm sort of progressive thinking, maybe we don't need to break it down to such fine, fine level if we have a limit on the number of units and so forth.
Are you proposing that we combine any of the short-term rental definitions, or are you just saying leave them?
Maybe leave them as it was originally in the city council and not have to, but bring the definition into the zoning that we define it such that it's only, you know, two units or two rooms or whatever.
Okay.
That kind of thing.
All right. Others, you want to, on this particular issue of defining the three types or other number of rental unit offerings, who else has some comments on that?
What I would just say, I just would keep the exception for Plum Island because I think there's a valid reason for that as far as the owner occupied requirement.
Rick, what do you think? Rick, what do you think about that?
Well, I, I guess I'm just going back to the original proposal, the city council proposal.
Yeah, me too. Definitions?
Well, no, the use table, comparing their, the, the use table for a short-term rental unit to the use table for a lodging house and bed and breakfast, and I just think it has to be clear that if we do this, if we do, if we follow that route of turning, of making a short-term rental allowed in every district, and again, I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, every residential district, but it's a huge change from what we, where we are right now. So, right now, you cannot do a bed and breakfast or, or a lodging house in Conservation, High, High Street, or R1 or R2. And what this is proposing is to essentially allow it, what is, which, what is substantively a bed and breakfast by right in those districts, and so it's not, what we're having is not a discussion about short-term rental units, it's a discussion, it's, it's a discussion about allowing bed and breakfast uses in the residential districts.
But again, again, they're not able to hang out a sign saying bed and breakfast.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's a minor point, most, most bed and breakfasts that, that rent two or three rooms don't actually have a sign, I don't think, most of the ones that I've stayed in don't have a sign, so I, I don't know whether the sign is the important thing, or the use of the property is the important thing, and that's, and that's, I guess, what I'm, what I'm concerned about, if we, you know, and again, I think we need to have that discussion, you know, whether, whether, whether we want to have essentially unrestricted, small bed and breakfasts in all residential districts.
Yeah, my, my sense on the short-term rental unit, it is someone renting out a room in their house, you know, and going back to what Anne said, you know, she likes the idea of, of that and so forth, and, and why, why restrict it, I guess I'm leaning towards that as well, it's a, it's a smaller kind of endeavor on their part, renting a room or two, that kind of thing, and so, if we, you know, if we're concerned about the size of it, restrict the short-term rental unit to the, to, like, two rooms, for example, and that would, would, would have that limiting effect. And allow it in the residential areas, because to me, it's, you know, it's, it's the idea is that someone's renting out a room in their house.
I get, yeah, I, I understand that, I guess a lot of this, a lot of the bed and breakfasts I've stayed in had one or two-room or three-room bed and breakfasts, and so, they're not like, I, you know, I would never think of the Garrison Inn or the Essex Street as, as a bed and breakfast, but I guess.
Right.
We, they are.
And, yeah, I didn't, I didn't think they were either.
And, and, and the, and the, um, the Garrison doesn't even seem to fit the definition of a, a bed and breakfast, but.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, given how many rooms they may have, I, where.
Okay, let, let's go back to the, the previous comment that you guys were working on and open it up to other people, this idea that two, maybe even three rooms in a house is effectively allowing something through short-term rental that isn't allowed by bed and breakfast. There's the idea of a signage, there are other uses within the house that might be fine, finely defined differentiators. How do other people feel about that? In terms of what we're allowing across the residential areas of the city, potentially with the short-term rental being permitted everywhere?
I just ask a clarifying, clarifying question, so the Garrison Inn and the Essex Inn, there's nobody living there, so they're, they're essentially, whether we call them bread and breakfast or hotels, there's, there's nobody else in the, living on the premises, it's just the guests, right?
They're supposed to be owner-occupied according to the definition, so I don't know if that's true or not.
But, but do we even know that they're bed and breakfasts?
I mean, they're licensed that they were bed and breakfasts.
Okay. One, okay.
So where were you going with that, Leah?
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to, again, understand the, the difference between all of these different categories. Um, I'm not, I'm not really sure where I'm going with that, I, I, I can pass for now.
All right, but let it sink in, because I know you weren't here last time, and it's a lot to take in, if you have the patience to read all the minutes as well.
I have a question, buddy.
Yeah.
For Andy, and he may not know the answer, but I'm wondering whether the Garrison Inn is not considered a bed and breakfast under zoning, it's whether it's considered a hotel under zoning, and, or something like that, and it's just only considered a bed and breakfast under licensing, and whether this is a a gap between our zoning ordinance and our licensing ordinance.
Well, that's kind of leading to where I was, where I think I was going with that, is, is if we call Garrison Inn a bed and breakfast, and there's no, and it's not owner-occupied, that, that affects my decision about how, how much we allow bed and breakfasts to, to be throughout the, um, different, different zones.
It just means we need to wrap knuckles in the licensing side.
Well, this also seems to suggest why Rick was pointing out earlier on, that you need to make the distinguish, distinguish between the zoning as to whether or not the owner-occupied provision is applicable, so, you know, maybe pull out as an exception, but you, your opinions, as like Leah said, your opinions might change about which, which residential districts you might feel comfortable with it in, depending on whether there's an owner on premises.
I thought that was a given, short-term rentals will have owner-on-premise, that was the first hard and fast rule that everybody agreed to from, you know, the working committee on. So that's a real differentiator regardless of what some of the bed and breakfasts may or may not do according to their license.
But, but the bed and breakfast.
Sorry, go ahead, Rick.
Would you say a, a bed and breakfast under zoning has to be owner-occupied, I guess that's the question, so, so that gets back, I think, to Leah's question, I think it was Leah, about, you know, the Garrison and so forth, is it really a bed and breakfast?
Does that matter? I mean, aren't we supposed to be looking at short-term rental units? I just don't understand why we keep coming back to these big ones. I thought it was the smaller ones that were more of a complication for us, because they seem to have overlap.
Well, that's the one where, yeah, where we, we would allow them in additional residential areas, so that's.
The little ones.
Yeah.
Well, I only asked the question because it kept seeming like we were bringing bed and breakfast into this conversation, we're trying to make a distinction between bread and breakfast and short-term rentals, if we just pulled bread and breakfast out of this discussion entirely, let that be zoned as it's been zoned forever, and then just limit the discussion to short-term rentals.
Right, that's what, yeah, that's what I was kind of saying, let them stay there and, and be their own thing, and we'll look at the the definition of the short-term rental units and to, define it more tightly.
Yeah.
Beth, did you want to jump in?
Well, I'm just, I mean, isn't one of the concerns that people are in effect going to be having bed and breakfasts in areas where it's not appropriate? By calling them short-term rental units.
But if they get a license for a short-term rental, and we are happy with the zoning criteria and the, and the license board is happy with the licensing agreement, who cares?
And so the licensing agreement does, the licensing, I haven't read through the proposal, but that's got a limit of three.
Yeah, that's where we're, we're thinking of taking the definitions, and, and if we adjust them, that would be our proposal for the definitions that we want to see in the zoning, and then they have to either adopt them back into the licensing, or argue with us, or override us.
I would agree with a limit of three, if that's a relevant comment.
Yeah. Yeah, because that's where it started, I mean, that's what it is.
Yeah.
In the licensing, so I think what we're saying is bring over the definitions from licensing with their more specificity than just general statements, and put them into the zoning, as long as there's nothing in there that is so clearly a licensing requirement that it would be inappropriate to put in the zoning, would that make sense?
Yes.
All right, um, I don't know if Andy can pull them up, so we can be sure they're as clean as we want them to be, and then we can put to bed the definitions of the three types of short-term rentals. Can you bring that up from the other, the licensing, oh, there it is. All right, home share rental. Anything in there that wouldn't fit for, that we'd want to take out or adapt?
There's four bedrooms there, so potentially you'd want to decrease that, is that right?
So I guess, I guess the basic question is, if we're, if we're if we're supportive of permitting them in all residential zones, why do we, do we really need to break them out as I, as I had broken them out?
Right, that's what I was saying, I think it can collapse down.
I was, I was just trying, I was just trying to talk about different types of units that have different types of impacts, but.
But if people are going to rent their whole houses, like, leave town for the weekend and rent a whole house, does it make sense to limit it to three bedrooms? I think in that case, the maximum should be the maximum number of people they can house.
I, I think I would disagree with that, I think, because if someone's, it's almost more reason to enforce the three, the three rooms, because if someone's leaving the house entirely, you don't want eight people there, eight cars with eight rooms. I don't know, that's my.
I don't know, I mean.
And the whole thing with renting the house, it was only if it was renting for less than 32 days in the definition, if it's over 32 days, then there apparently is no regulation about, is that right?
That would be a long-term rental.
Right.
It would be a normal rental.
Yeah.
And it would be covered by a contract.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not aware of some of that, so I didn't look into that yet, if there's additional regulations.
And then there's the limit of that they can only do 120 days.
Right, consecutive or non-consecutive, so that is part of the short, so there are two pieces on the rental length, one is not more than 32 days for one rental, and a total of not more than 120.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, my, I've rented houses with groups of people and been looking for a number of bedrooms, and I, you know, I think that's something that people look for when they're renting a whole house. And limiting it to three, I feel, would be restrictive.
I think, I would agree with that as well, just because I feel like there's certainly houses, you know, that are substantial in size, that can accommodate a lot of people, and they get rented out, especially, you know, in the summer season.
Yeah, but again, again, I think if, if you're doing a whole-house rental, that doesn't fall into the purview of a short-term rental, because it's not owner-occupied.
No, that's okay, because there's an operator who, this is, comes under the category of, of, uh, what do you call it, being able to rent your house while you're away on vacation to help you financially support it or whatever. Not always e, used that way, but there would be, the license makes sure that there is somebody responsible for that whole house rental, when the red, when the primary owner is not on site. And that's what this particular home share rental.
Right, so I guess, in my mind, that, that, the image of that is not a short-term rental unit. To me, that's a different category altogether.
Yeah, well, what about families that go away for two weeks, and they want to rent a four-bedroom house?
Right, I, I'd say they're renting their house, they're not renting a short-term rental unit.
What's the difference? Yeah.
The person is not there. I, I just think it's a, yeah, it's a different, whole different category, where it's not where it's not owner-occupied, I, because I thought, going into this whole discussion, we were more concerned about the Airbnb type of thing, and, and so forth, so, yeah, I know, it's just, just my, my vision of it.
Yeah.
I mean, Airbnb, I've always had, I would only rent a house where nobody was there, I usually, when I've used Airbnb, done a whole-house rental.
Likewise.
That's a lot of what Airbnb does.
So when you do that, Beth, though, there's always someone you can call, or somebody meets you there, or what have you, so that's the control the community has over the fact that you and your family don't have rabbi parties, and.
Right, and I would assume, I mean, I think there's something in the licensing, right, where people can complain, and if you can lose your license for too many.
And that's part of the licensing part of it, yeah.
And that's what I'm saying, the zoning, what we're talking about here, you have to think, what is the licensing doing to make this work, and if the licensing can't make it work, then we change the definition, but as long as the definition works as a zoning regulation, and we know that it's controlled, disciplined by the licensing agreement, then I don't have any problem with it, quite honestly.
Problem with what?
With having, you know, a full, a home share rental with four bedrooms in it.
Yeah. I would make the point that I think it's not, it's not appropriate to give a maximum of eight people, if for no other reason besides, how do you, how do you count children? Do you count them as?
I agree, I mean, two families come and they each have three kids, you're done, you know.
Right, right.
So that's a good point, are other people on board with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
And then that is controlled in licensing, because when you apply for, you know, for a room or multiple rooms, they're going to ask you how many people you have, they're going to say, okay, if you've got kids, you can have a cot here and a cot there, or whatever. You're going to manage that.
Yeah, I, I agree. Sorry, I was interrupting, but I, I think the only restriction that I would say would be important there is parking.
Yeah, that came up last time, and we need to look at that more closely, especially once we get these definitions, if it just says a maximum of four bedrooms.
Yeah, so, so I'm revising my thinking again, now that you're going into this, these categories, I think maybe we do need to split it out, so I'm, I think I'm back to that.
Okay, so we'll take a maximum of eight people out of it, with a note in our comments on why we're doing that, to allow for children, just as an example.
And because it's controlled in license, licensing.
Well, that's going to be assumed, but we can't say that too often.
Okay.
So we'll say that here too as well.
And, and I guess that's why I was, why I didn't have any room restrictions in the zone, my proposal, I mean, because I figure all of that would be taken care of by licensing, but if, I mean, the, the same argument could be had for all of the the different types of, of short-term rentals, I would think.
True, but if we're going to say parking is part of zoning, don't we need to justify whatever we put into parking, and the number of rental sub-units?
I was tying it to number of units, not to number of, zoning to number of rented rooms, rather than to number of people.
Right, so we'll take the people out, but this says maximum of four bedrooms, so we can still control, if we keep that in here, we, oh, I see what you mean, you just let the licensing take care of all of that, and we just say parking.
Part, yeah, we, because that's one of the things we talked about last time, is taking the parking out, and I can't remember, we wrote, it's in the list somewhere, it's in our below list.
Right.
Yeah. Well, maybe we can't decide whether we want to have number of, of bedrooms or not for the definitions, and we leave it open, and let them decide. Those counselors, when they come up with the final, with the definitions they can live with. We can put both in, and put our rationale. Let's look at the other, the limited share rental unit, and see if we would say anything different about that one other than taking out the number of guests.
Can Andy move that up a bit, so we can see the, the full section there, it's blocked on my screen by some of the or, that I'll have to delete.
Are we okay with three bedrooms for limited share, or you want to drop it to two?
Again, why, why would you limit it, I don't understand.
Overload in the neighborhood, I don't know, but I'm just, we're trying to differentiate it. This one obviously has the owner living there, so if they had six bedrooms, and one of them was reserved for the owner, you're saying they could rent all five bedrooms if we didn't have a number in there.
I also don't quite understand why you have to have one bedroom reserved at all times for exclusive use by the operator, I know that. I also don't quite understand why you have to have one bedroom reserved at all times for exclusive use by the operator. I know that, I know a family that does it and, and sometimes they sleep in, they've actually slept on the couch so that they could have, accommodate some people who wanted an extra room.
This is part, this is part of the thinking that says, keep it limited so you're not overwhelming these neighborhoods where we're not having a special permit, where we're allowing it across the board.
Really hard thing to enforce, like where, where are these people sleeping?
Well, all they have to do is have, you know, a floor plan and show that one of those bedrooms is reserved. It also reinforces the idea that the operator or owner is on the premises. And I think that's part of the reason for that, because they couldn't be there if you didn't reserve a room for them. Yeah, if they sleep on the sofa, we're not gonna know the difference. Um, but if they have a maximum of certain number of bedrooms, it's at least saying to the, to the residential neighborhood that there's some, um, restriction by zoning and by licensing that these, these houses will not be overrun with, you know, empty number of renters during the high season or whenever they're being rented.
So would it make more sense to actually say, instead of the number of rooms, just the number of guests per room? But again.
You can't, you can't monitor that.
Yeah, right, because then again, we're asking the question about kids and.
Right.
In the end, we may, this is Jennifer speaking, in the end, it's true, we may not actually be able to monitor the way that someone uses it. But if the city is going to issue a license and we're going to ask our building inspector and our fire department to review these things, the limitations on the number of bedrooms that are allowed to be rented come from state building and fire codes. And that's why you're seeing the limit on the number of bedrooms and the number of occupants, because those are defined in building codes and fire codes. So, um, I know, I know it seems a little bit crazy that, that the licensing is getting to that level of specificity and as you speak, you've, you've seen people use buildings the other way. That's true, but then they're assuming that liability and not the city.
And Jennifer, let me just check in with you. You just used the word licensing. We're talking about zoning. So for our purposes, we're saying we just want to have a limit on the bedrooms, not the number of guests. If licensing goes beyond that with the number of guests, they can still control for that. But as a zoning issue, we're gonna just leave it at the number of bedrooms. Does that fly?
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just letting, you were asking, why would you do that? And I was trying to explain why the licensing definitions include that level of specificity. I don't think zoning needs to, but it can't go more lenient on the number of bedrooms than the licensing already is.
Okay, that's a good point. So we can take out number of guests, saying that's part of licensing, but the bedrooms should be what we can live with and we're gonna assume that licensing can do that as well.
Yeah, I think, I think if you're, you stay, if the zoning is mute on it, that's fine, but I just would not want to see a contradictory number in there.
Good, and that'll be worked out in the, in the final round of cleaning up both ordinances. Anything more on limited share?
Question about the definitions. So the home share rental unit has specified periods for fewer than thirty-two days. But there is no limitation in the definition of limited share rental unit. Is there a limitation, a timeframe limitation elsewhere? Or could somebody just, you know, have six people in their houses somewhat indefinitely?
Why wouldn't it be the same for all of these?
Should be the same, it should be in there. So that should be added to each of the other two definitions if they're not in there. Certainly it should be added to limited share.
What is that, just being added?
It's, um.
A time limitation.
May offer a validly licensed, um, limited share rental unit for periods of fewer than thirty-two days.
Actually, I'm gonna raise my hand on that. Um, there's a residence on our street where its owner occupied and he rents out his rooms. And people come and go on a three-month basis or a six-month basis or a one-year basis, and I don't know if they have their own contracts.
Yeah, that under zoning would be a lodging house and I don't know if they have a license to do that, but there is a definition for that use which you just described and it's lodging house.
Okay, I mean, I know that there was a big fight on the street when the guy opened, you know, this up and started listing these properties, but we were told by the city that, you know, there's nothing we can do, but that was years ago, so I don't know.
If, if it's the one I'm thinking of, there is a legal lodging house and they are about fourteen units in the building and they are rented on a month-to-month basis and they do tend to be.
This is a, a three-bedroom house. But anyway.
There's no, MJ, you're, you're right, there, there's nothing on the books for that kind of rental and everybody is in violation of a regulation that doesn't exist yet. So that's why we're going through all of this.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, yeah. Other than noise and, and disturbance of some sort, um, that the police would take over, Jennifer has, her hands are tied. Right, Jennifer? At this point, because there's no, nothing on the books.
Uh, actually, we've, we've had some weigh-in recently and from our legal counsel that, that these are, they are not permitted because by not having a definition that they are prohibited. So I have two active enforcements, um, on these right now and it's, it's in, I would love to come to some closure on this issue.
On which? You have, uh, two active projects, I mean, you, you mean Airbnbs?
There are two, yes, there are two active enforcements where people have cited, yes, that, that I have had to tell the people they are illegal.
And they're just trying to do Airbnbs?
Yes.
Yeah.
And they're illegal because they fall into the definition of lodging house and they don't have a license or, or some other.
Because we don't have licensing for Airbnbs yet.
Right.
Right, and therefore, therefore, this is a business use in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, right, and we all know this is going on in other places too, but.
Yeah, so technically they're all illegal, but as long as they stay quiet and clean and nobody objects to them, they've been going on their merry way and they don't understand, as we've heard in the public hearings, why they should be regulated. Um, or why they should be, um, if not, some of them are saying, fine, regulate me, I'll pay the taxes, I'll get a license. Um, but I just don't want people to have a bad impression of what I'm doing, because I'm effectively probably following all the regulations even though they aren't in place yet. So that's what we've heard from the public.
This is Andy, um, that I just highlighted on the screen, the section or the sentence in the zoning ordinance that what Jennifer was referencing, which is the fact that if it's not listed in the table of uses or, or uses uh, in general, it's not allowed. So, uh, this sentence is what's controlling here and what our legal counsel was pointing to and agreeing that the, um, that the short-term rental units as of now are not listed as an allowable use.
I don't think I can see what you're looking at, Andy.
Are you not seeing a highlighted sentence?
Nope.
I am.
I am.
Yeah, I am too.
Yeah.
Sorry, Beth.
Your share, your screenshot.
View options, do I?
What do you see right now?
I see the limited share rental unit definition.
Oh, dear.
Click on your Zoom, um, one more time.
To refresh or something?
Yeah, it sounds like fresh.
Where's my Zoom?
Do you have a little icon on the, are you on a Mac or a PC?
A PC.
Oh, well, I have a little icon at the bottom of my.
Yeah, or do you have multiple desktops?
PC has a stop video and under that, it has video settings, check that.
Nope, she's gone.
Yep, I'm here.
Yeah, okay, you're working on it, okay.
Yep.
Shall we move on to owner-adjacent rental unit definition from the licensing amendment? Andy, can you pull those definitions up again? It's gonna probably screw up Lizzy, Beth even more. Okay, owner-adjacent rental unit. Again, should we add the limitation of thirty-two day maximum?
Yes.
That'll, that'll be consistent with the other two definitions.
And this one is, and this one is saying there is only one, one unit allowed.
Even though you may have more depending on your situation, yep.
Right.
And this unit, are we, were you saying anything about bedrooms to be consistent or no? I mean, I'm sure the fire code has something to say about bedroom units.
Um, we had three in limited share maximum and we had four in the home share. This could be similar to a home share if it were a large second unit on the property. Want to take it up, if you want to add bedrooms, it would be consistent to have four maximum.
So in this kind of a scenario, the owner could be in the small little carriage house and the whole house could be free, right? So it could be a large house.
Right.
So take what we just had, the, the Nelson property. I mean, they succeeded in everything and they're gonna do whatever they do with the big building. I think they're gonna have two units in there. But conceivably, yeah, they could have kept the carriage house, although does this say anything about, well, primary residents, but it doesn't say how big it has to be. Because they are planning to live in that carriage house. Yeah.
Yeah, but so should there be a maximum or should it just be based on the license depending on the size of the house? Wouldn't it vary if you have a, and for the home share too, if you have a six-bedroom?
Exactly.
I don't know how many six-bedrooms there are, but.
Oh, but wasn't it limited because of the fire code as well?
Yeah, well, the fire code was limited anyway through licensing. Um, so maybe we can take out the number of bedrooms in both.
I guess I have a, I have a question about what we're doing here. If we're, if we're talking about being more permissive, you know, being as permissive as was proposed in the original city council ordinance, I'm not really sure why we need to do any of this stuff, you know, why don't we just?
I was wondering the same thing.
Why, why don't we just go back to a simple short-term rental unit definition? Forget about even breaking out prior, the owner adjacent to limited share, the home share. Keep out the Plum Island as a separate, as a separate thing, because that's, that's different. But just go with a simple, if we're gonna say PPPP anyway.
Rick, this is Andy, this, this goes along with one of my original comments or concerns about this process on the short-term rental units, which is that I, rather than looking at, you know, again, various drafts and then more iterations coming out of the text of this ordinance, whether it be from the planning board or city council, that we come to some agreement, you know, collectively, again, as best as one can describe that with nine planning board members and eleven city council members, but some sort of consensus on what it is that you'd like it to be before drafting the language so that we don't sort of go around these circles. Um, but I agree if, if, if there's, if, if that is where things are headed, then I, it, it, it seems to suggest that we go back to the original structure that was proposed, which is one broad definition for short-term rental units and then leaving, um, lots of other details to the licensing piece.
I would go along with that if it doesn't affect anything that we want to include in the zoning. So if, if, for example, we want to, um, put in, I was thinking parking, then we'd have to have some sort of justification for it. But if all of these breakdowns are just pertinent to licensing, then I can go along with one definition. But I want a definition in there, in the zoning of some sort.
And are we around the issue of the bed and breakfast?
That's taken care of by suggesting the, um, the exclusionary language to those two definitions, bed and breakfast and lodging house.
I think we, we need to see that language, because I'm, I'm not convinced that that works, but, um. And I think we've talked about taking the parking out of zoning and not having a numerical number, I mean, not having a new, a number, but having that as a, parking as a reason why the licensing commission could deny an application.
So it goes back into like.
Would you have a general statement in the, in the zoning saying having appropriate parking at all?
Just not saying anything.
Yeah, Rick, this, this is Andy, that's actually how I was looking at this some time back. I know, um, one or two meetings ago, you had made a comment about or a concern that you thought that parking was really a strictly a zoning issue. I had seen that as something that was probably better handled by the licensing commission, because that's gonna flex a little bit depending on, um, the various different sites involved with these operations. They're not all gonna be the same, they're not all gonna have the same um, issues on, with on-street parking in the neighborhood or off, or off-street parking on the site. So I, I don't think it's, again, just as conceptually, I don't think it's necessary for the zoning to dictate what the parking is. Um, as, as Alden, I think, pointed out, it, it could be a reference to the, that it has to be in accordance with an approved license from the licensing commission. And that way the licensing commission can take into account the particular circumstances surrounding that property, its neighborhood and so forth. You know, when rendering an approval for a license.
I, I agree, I just was, there was a, there was a draft, and I don't know which draft it was, of a licensing agreement that imposed a parking requirement. And we can't do that. If you have it as a, as a criteria, concern about congestion, that the licensing commission can deny a license based on, on parking congestion issues, I can see that. But I think that there is a, there was a discussion about, oh yeah, this on-street, that one of the survey or plot plan that indicates on-street or off-street parking areas to accommodate all uses of the property, including the proposed short-term rental unit. And I'm not sure that that, you could have that. You know, we were talking about, uh, parking, off-street parking, whether or not on-site. That was something we had talked about.
So you're saying just leave that all to licensing and make sure whatever they come up with on licensing about parking, that it is not in conflict with any.
Doesn't have a numerical requirement for parking, right.
Yeah, okay, that's a licensing issue and we'll leave it with them and take it out of here or even take it out of our considerations.
Yeah.
Can we wrap up this business about the definitions? Are we, um, generally in favor? And if not, what are the exceptions to having one definition? Something to the effect of Rick's in the draft ordinance amendment, short-term rental unit, the accessory use of a dwelling unit for residential occupancy by a person or persons for a period of fewer than thirty-two consecutive days in exchange for payment.
And, and again, that requires us to go to a use table and say, we want to have those, all of those uses as permitted uses in all the residential districts. So, so I guess.
That's the second question.
And would we have the maximum number of days in that definition as well?
No, that's what zoning, I mean, that's licensing.
Okay.
Just, just the thirty-two.
Yeah, the thirty-two is the differentiator from what other people have said about how long people can stay and how it, you know, how different is it from a, a short, long-term contract or a bed and breakfast? So the thirty-two days helps. Um, back to the permitting, um, the, let's look at what's in the, the proposed amendment as the council has it. It's permitted in conservation, um, uh, High Street Ridge. It's permitted in conservation, High Street Ridge, 1, 2, and 3. Not permitted in B1. Permitted in B2 and B3. Not permitted in I1 and I1B or I2, none of the industrial zones. Not permitted in marine or marine-dependent or.
Medical.
Medical. And the only question that was raised there, I believe, was by Alden about not allowing it in.
The marine development.
Because of where those districts currently exist, which include down along Joppa, where there are residential dwellings already. I think we had been, when we said not permitted in the working session, it was, we were thinking about, you know, all the like, the really heavy-duty marine-dependent.
Marina. Things, yeah.
Exactly. But if there are, as there are residential, some limited, very limited residential dwellings in the WMD, do we want to change that to permitted?
I was thinking perhaps yes. I mean, why lock those people out? And by permitting it, you're not gonna have people, well, I wouldn't think people building a house in that area just to do this type of activity. It's just the existing buildings.
And they have to live in them anyway.
Right.
So it's like creating a residential, I don't even know if that's allowed, to create a residential unit. Well, they would be on that side of the street if, you know, they wanted to expand or something, but only where it's currently existing.
Isn't the issue that those properties are currently in the wrong zoning district?
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I mean, currently, they are that way. I would think that when we do the rezoning, the rezoning and redo the districts, that would be cleaned up.
I wouldn't, I'm not sure with allowing this in an area that we truly want to be marine-dependent. And so, and as it is right now, those are two totally different WMD districts. You know, the residential one and the one that is more downtown. So I would keep it the way it is and then at some point, maybe they'll fix the zoning map.
And by fixing the zoning map, you mean they carve those houses out of the WMD zone?
Make them residential, yeah.
Right, right.
They'd go with the residential neighborhood, a district behind them.
Across the street.
This would be a short-term.
Restriction.
Inconvenience on these people, yeah, if they're already doing it and want to apply. And it would just put a lot, if they did that and made a stink about it, it would just put more pressure on the rezoning effort to make, for that counselor to make sure the rezoning effort goes through with the district change.
Right.
Or could we grandfather them in somehow if they can demonstrate that they've already been doing it illegally?
Hey, you're the lawyer. I don't want that. I wouldn't.
By just, you know, putting somebody that has set themselves up to do this out of business for some period of time.
Do we think that there are any there?
I thought I had seen a bed and breakfast there, but I don't see them on the list of licenses. But when I walk by that section, there is a place that has a sign out.
Oh, I think they sold.
Oh, you're talking about Anse and Chuck. Yeah, they aren't there anymore and I think it's going back to residential. If that's the only one you were worried about, that was bed and breakfast. That wasn't a short-term.
Right, right. It was a bed and breakfast.
Yeah, yeah. Now, they've long gone.
Yeah.
All right, then let's leave this not permitted the way it is. And one last thing to discuss potentially in a heated discussion with those counselors. So the less we have to change on here, the more we get ammunition for what we really want. All right, where are we on this list of issues, Rick? Have we?
Well, I think the only thing I've gotten is under number two. Should the different types of STRUs be defined and distinguished? I think we're talking about the first bullet, treat all STRUs alike, but I added except Plum Island.
Yeah.
And so we ignore, so the second bullet, we don't, you know, we're not choosing the second bullet. We're not choosing the third bullet. So I'm gonna cross those out. And then the. I don't think we need to have, we're gonna define the uses, so we don't need the fourth bullet. And. So the question is subject to a licensing agreement.
Yes, always subject to a licensing agreement. Maybe we say that at the, you know, they can put that wherever they want in the wording, but it will be very clearly linked, the zoning to the licensing.
Right.
And so if we just have one type, they're still going to, in the licensing, regulate each one differently. We're just saying they're, we're not.
They could, right? They would look at the specific situation.
Yeah.
But that's not a zoning issue, Beth, is what we're saying.
Yep.
Okay, where should they be allowed? And we've just solved that problem. They're either permitted or not permitted.
And it's gotta be as in that, as in the ordinance, right?
As in the ordinance, yeah. All right, number four, should the zoning ordinance require a special permit? Well, we don't have to deal with that, do we?
Right.
Okay. Wow.
Yep.
Five, Andy, you wanna flip us up to five? Andy, thank you. Relationship to other uses.
So hopefully putting the exclusions in would eliminate this, right?
Yeah, if we propose the language for bed and breakfast and lodging house excluding other uses, those two other uses or short-term rental.
Right.
Well, I think that, you know, this idea that came up at the last meeting, which is to say that that first bullet, to say that in the case of conflict, the short-term rental unit shall override any stricter regulation. I can't remember who suggested that last time, but.
That was Beth.
That was Beth, I thought so. And so that's a, you know, we could just put that in there. And that would, we wouldn't need to worry about any definitions then. We could say, no matter what the zoning ordinance says about bed and breakfast, if you're a small bed and breakfast, that qualifies to be a short-term rental unit. You can be anywhere in any residential district.
Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't that fly in the face of another statement in the ordinance that says in the case of conflict, the stricter interpretation shall rule?
Yeah, I would have suggested avoiding that because you are gonna have someone potentially down the road saying, pointing to that particular language and saying, well, we have the ability to use that language to flip it, right? So.
Well, if this, we put this in here because we were originally concerned that people would, as we said earlier tonight, try to use a short-term rental to have a bed and breakfast or. Was it, yeah.
Yes, in a residential area.
In a residential area, but, you know, licensing of a bed and breakfast or licensing of a short-term rental would avoid that.
Yeah, you could just put in the phrase not withstanding and then make reference to that other section.
That's what I was thinking of doing, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so this is not relevant anymore.
No, I think it is relevant. I think, I think, isn't that what you just said, Andy, that you put that notwithstanding statement in?
Yeah, just to make it clear, to address the concern that Jennifer raised, that you could put explicit language in this particular amendment, which is obviously the most recent amendment, you know, later than the earlier language in the ordinance that says the stricter requirement applies. You're saying here that notwithstanding that provision.
Yeah. So we reference it and nobody can say, oh, you've caused a conflict.
Right, there can't be any question then of what your entitlement was here on the council's entitlement.
So then this is okay. All right, good. Thank you, Beth, again, for that one. But we don't have to worry about the definition. Oh, we've already said what we're gonna redefine for bed and breakfast.
Well, we don't need to redefine if we include that notwithstanding in there.
Oh, that's even better. Is that true?
I think so, because we were recognizing that there's a conflicting definition and we're saying that the least strict applies.
Jennifer, do you have any concerns about that?
Not with what I understand it to be tonight. Again, I'll want to see it written for sure, but it sounds as if it allows each to function independently.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. How should parking be addressed? Ignore it, right, in the zoning?
Ignore it, yeah.
Okay.
But it's really, I think we need to make the point that there should be a, I think it's in the, it's really the third, we talked about the third bullet. Remove the, any numerical requirement from licensing. Add parking congestion as an issue that the Licensing Board can consider. So even though we're not discussing the licensing, it's something we need to point out because it relates to zoning.
That's good. So it becomes a recommendation to the city council to consider or the License Board. Just the first part, but not the details?
Not the details.
Right. All right. And then to Don's point about the, are we down to the noise one then, number seven?
I think so.
Jim McCauley answered his question at the time to say that this was such an important issue. He wanted, he felt it should be reinforced by keeping it in the zoning. But is it really a zoning issue?
It's really a licensing issue.
I don't think so, yeah.
And it's a general ordinance issue. So to Don's original, I think the assumption behind his comment was, was it in here?
Yep.
I think he was trying to appease people who have that concern, but I would love for it to not be in the zoning because there's actually nothing that I, as the enforcement officer, have the power to do immediately. And therefore, it needs to fall either general ordinance to the police or as a violation of their license.
Good, it's out. So what I recommend before we close this out is to go back to the proposed amendment, look at what they're calling requirements and interpretation and make sure that there there isn't anything in there we want to also include or we want to say something about them. Otherwise, all of this stuff will stay in there if we don't say anything about it. It starts with. Requirements.
Aren't some of those things gonna be in the definition so that they, you know, wouldn't be in there?
Well, I want to make sure that, let's just go through them all and make sure, yeah, that one's out or, you know, so that we can be clear on our recommendations, because I don't want this to stay here if we don't want it. Okay, I mean, we just took care of the noise one. So that one obviously is out and that's what made me think about looking at all of these again. So under requirements, Andy, I don't know if you can pull this up. It's the zoning amendment as proposed, the original.
Yeah, the one that's most recently been drafted by the counselors, correct?
Yeah, exactly. Let's look at those and I think this should wrap it up for us. That's licensing.
Yeah, my apologies, yeah.
So they're, yeah, number, under number three.
Okay.
Before you get to number two.
Is there something more there?
Well, I guess my, this is my issue where I disagree with Counselor Agarwal. I really feel like this should be in the use table, not as freestanding thing because other accessory uses are in the use table as well. So that was what I had proposed, is not changing the table at all. Just locating it in, taking out the preface, that specific districts were permitted, taking that sentence out and moving the table into the regular use table. So it's together with boarding, lodging houses and bed and breakfast so we can see them all together.
Right, that's what I thought it was.
Rick, do you recall Counselor Agarwal was concerned about trying to make it a distinct table so that it was clear?
He said that our current table is all screwed up anyway and it shouldn't have accessory uses in it. And so we're gonna fix that when we redo the zoning. But I think that until we do redo the zoning, we should treat all accessory uses the same.
I agree. I think it should be there.
I agree too.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. Frankly, I like having all the uses conveniently listed in one table. But I just, okay, I just wanted to note that. I'm in agreement with that.
But we don't want it here as well? We just want a reference to?
No, it would be part of, it would be a part of the amendment to amend the use table.
Ah, okay, and to include this.
To include this in the use table, yes.
Yeah, so you're just changing the language.
Yeah. I can put it together.
Yeah, I'm also assuming you're amending the definitions table with what we had said, right?
Good point, very good point. Add a definition, right, right.
Which gets to the first thing under number three, which seems to be the definition that we're now changing.
Right, but we had said that we were gonna use what Rick had for the definition. And that's why, yeah, part of this in number three is, shouldn't be there.
Right, so the first item in number three gets replaced with Rick's short-term rental unit definition.
Right.
Okay.
Can we make clear we're calling it, it's a description of use?
Yeah.
Which does not go in the definition section, but it goes in the description of use section?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, this, to be clear, that is gonna go into the table that lists the definitions for each use.
And that's the 5E table that you're referring to, list of allowable uses?
Correct, correct.
And what do you think about just calling out the Plum Island rental units separately, rather than having a, it kind of disappear in a paragraph?
I personally like it, Rick. They haven't, there are enough inconsistencies that are developing in the definitions of the others that we're not applying to Plum Island. I actually, I would support that.
Okay, so I will create the, I will use the short-term rental unit definition and the Plum Island rental unit definition and I will actually then create two lines in the use table, one for each of them.
So, Rick, could I just clarify, this is Andy for the record. Is the assumption here that the Plaine Board's report might have, in addition to maybe a bullet list or whatnot, communication, also perhaps a draft revision to or markup version of what the council was last presenting in the meeting?
Yeah, maybe not in this formal ordinance form that you have it in here.
Got it.
Kind of.
Rewrite.
So that it's all consistent.
Okay.
That took care of the Plum Island one, B.
Yep.
That should be in here, right?
Yes.
Okay. And we need C because it's a, speaking about use.
Yes.
What about D? I think that is also zoning, right?
Yes.
Yes, I think so.
We're gonna remove E. I think we're all agreed on that. F. Have we said this anywhere else?
No, we need to have that, yeah.
Yeah, we need that, okay. Is there any reason to move it to the top?
Possibly. It's kind of a major point, right?
Possibly, it's kind of, kind of a major point, right?
Like, all this falls apart if they don't have a lot. I don't think it matters. It's, I mean, at this point, we're not writing the zoning, we're just putting in the pieces that we want to make sure are included. This interpretation at the end, is that really necessary? It's just. Yeah, let's get rid of it. If they want to emphasize something, they can add it, but we've got the core of what we want. That was a, is there anything else that we've left out or needs to be confirmed?
Do we?
Did we include the, the, yeah, the residency 183 days of a?
That will be in the definition of the short-term rental unit. No, we're leaving that for licensing.
Leaving that for licensing, yeah.
Okay.
The only number we've got in there is fewer than 32 consecutive days, which is the differentiator for a short-term rental versus anything else you might have that looks or smells like this. Possible to say we are done with this for now?
We're done, what do we call it?
Oh, the report or whatever, no, the non-report?
Could it be perhaps the planning board's preliminary comments as opposed to a recommendation?
Or a work in progress? Well, if you say preliminary comments, that means that we will carry on with more discussion at the joint public hearing.
Right.
The idea, just so everybody knows, the idea behind this is that Rick will write it up and I'll have a look at it since we are the subcommittee of two and then submit it to Andy for sharing with the city council before the joint public hearing, so they know where we're headed. But it is not meant to be a definitive statement and it also means that any of us have other ideas or want to back off on something. We can do that. And thirdly, it means that the three people who aren't here tonight are not straitjacketed into a list of absolutes that we are going forward with. So that's all that to say there, discussion points, work in progress, preliminary comments, as Andy suggested. Any of that is fine.
Good.
I find it really interesting that we spent all this time in two meetings and to come up with a rather simple, simplified, but far from simplistic set of preliminary comments.
It sounds like that's the goal, so.
It makes a lot of sense. Simplify, simplify.
Yeah. And it's kind of a backhanded way of saying, thank you, everybody, for putting the effort into it. We're not, and we don't know where, as I said, I guess in the beginning of the last meeting, the counselors could always override and change things. But I think we've made it, done our job to make it clear what we feel fits in zoning. And as long as Jennifer is there during the joint public hearing to remind them of anything that might not fit in zoning, that would help us a whole lot. So Jennifer, can you? Will you be able to attend that joint public hearing?
I plan on attending, yep.
Thank you very much.
I, I think one more thing that I would like to just suggest that we include, that I, I was just going through what I had done before and to specifically, specifically exempt the houseboats and the residential units contracted for hospital convalescence stays, et cetera. Those, those are, those are part of the original concept of the licensing agreement, but I think they should also be exempted from the zoning as well.
They are still in the licensing, aren't they?
Yes, but it, but as it is right now, the zoning would include them without exempting them.
Oh, then let's exempt, then let's, yeah.
Keep the, keep that provision.
Yeah.
Can I just ask, why are houseboats?
Well, houseboats aren't on land.
Yeah, they're, they're not regulated by zoning to begin with. So to me, that, that seems a little, that item is not particularly relevant, but if, it doesn't hurt, I guess.
I think, I think the licensing exempted them anyway, so.
It did.
Does that mean they, that Airbnbs are allowed in houseboats or not?
They are.
It says, "An operator shall not offer more than three houseboats as home-share rental units at the same time." And that's in the licensing.
Right, but the zoning, the zoning would allow, the zoning doesn't govern, govern them because they're not on land, so.
So maybe they have no place to be in here. May, they shouldn't be even referenced in the zoning, only the
Only the residential.
Medical use, which is on land.
That would be my vote.
Okay.
Yeah, take it, don't, don't, don't include the houseboats at all.
Okay.
That gives us stronger standing when we start saying, no, that's not zoning. And then nobody can come back at us and say, well, you're zoning house, you're mentioning houseboats even just in passing.
Okay.
Good. All right, everybody clear what's going to happen on this? And turns out that's the, I think that's the only thing on the agenda for next meeting so far. There could be applications, I suppose, coming in before the deadline, but that's it for that meeting.
Wow.
And as you know, we've got, we told the institution if they miss tonight, they have to wait till the 21st of October. And that's why that's on that night. And staff noted, keep that one a very light night, other than that application. So the only other thing I wanted to ask everybody about is, do you have any problem with allowing an applicant who's presenting their case on Zoom to come up on video? To have it, have them sort of be with us and?
Much prefer them to be on video.
I would prefer it, yeah.
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 Okay, so Andy tells me he can do that. And so I checked it already with him before I wanted to offer it to you. But I think that would work too. It's only for that meeting and for the period of time that they are on. So Andy, can we institute that? I don't know if you want to warn people to wash their hair before they come on or something? I don't know.
Yeah, this, this is Andy, so.
The institution should know that, you know, that's going to, I would like to notify them in particular.
Yeah, Bonnie, we can clarify that. The bottom line is that Caitlin communicates with each of the applicants before the meeting to verify who's going to be presenting. So what we would do during the meeting is they would be in the audience as typical attendees. I would promote them to a panelist status, just like yourselves during the meeting. If someone is presenting something, they could use the screen share function. And then, as long as they have enabled the video on their end or if they have a photograph they've enabled, that would then display as yours does.
Okay, good. And she'll, so, I mean, anybody who's come to a Zoom meeting would not know that from the past. So that's kind of a new procedure. So going forward, I guess they should all be notified. Good. Any other updates from you?
Not at this time, no.
Anybody else have any updates they'd like to share?
Nope.
I guess then we're ready to adjourn, right? Have we, we've covered everything. Let's have a motion.
Have a motion, I'll move to adjourn. Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that, MJ.
Thank you, and I'll call roll. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Leah?
Yep.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. We are adjourned. Good work.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Nine o'clock, yeah, good work. We had a planning meeting, yes. Okay, see you whenever, then, on the 7th.
All right.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.